This is me, the City of Eureka Springs City Council, come to order. Clerk will roll call, please.
Joyce Elder.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, here. Terry McClung?
Here.
Mr. Perkypile?
Here.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
I'm sorry, David.
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Everybody, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, that brings us to approval of the agenda. Motion to discuss.
Motion.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir. Could, under new business, since we have a guest here to speak to that vacating request, would it be possible to move that up under public comments?
Which number?
Number two, new business.
Number two. Move it to where?
First, before unfinished business under public comments.
Number one.
Yes, sir. And then, new business, number five and number six, could we table those so that have time to meet with the attorney to get some more feedback?
Number seven.
No, sir. Number five and six.
Number six.
I've forgotten what that animal thing is.
Possibly number seven, I guess. That's Mayor Page's, though, so.
Is there a second on five and six?
Yes.
Second.
And number seven? And number seven? There's a second on number seven?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Perkypile?
No, that's fine. We're going to schedule a workshop.
Okay. Any other changes?
Can we move new business number one up underneath the number two unfinished? Mr. Gunnell's is also here.
Second.
He's going to come after vacating McCune, is that the notion? Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other changes? Felicitations? If not, all for the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Motion to approve of the mess for November the 4th, 2013?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Change to licitations, corrections. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like I said. Motion on the commission committee authority reports in expired terms. Beverly is here for the planning.
The planning commission only met once in November, on November the 12th. And we did review the vacation request of McCune and Hartman Streets, but there were only four of us at that meeting, and we could not decide what was the best action to take. And so, we tabled it until we had more information, so we're not going to be of help for you in that situation. Also, we were asked to look at farm animals, 6.0801. We didn't just totally dismiss it and say, no, there's not going to be farm animals, but we didn't take any action on that. We decided to put it into a workshop sometime in 2014. We also sent you our budget requests for 2014, and tonight, y'all have street vacation procedures on your agenda. If you didn't get a paper that I sent out, I've sent it out several times, but if you don't have it, the planning commission just feels like we should have something in code about how to go through the vacation process. At one time, Parks did come here, and y'all did approve their procedure, but it's not anywhere in code. And so, what happens is, we are following that procedure, and the applicants go to Parks, and then they come to planning, and Parks and planning both give you our recommendation. But that's not in code. There's not really a fee assessed for anybody that applies. And so, that's why we put the procedures down, and we would like to hopefully get something put into our code book about that. That's why it's on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. CAPC, before you have an application for Mr. Damon Henke, need a motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Henke is the proprietor of Bella Paradiso. He is applying for the open commission seat on CAPC. So, yes, ma'am?
This application, does this mean that he is not a registered voter in Eureka Springs?
He is.
Then what does he mean? He's still registered as previous?
No longer. He is.
Oh, okay. Now, he's legal, we hear. Okay.
We can vote on him next meeting unless Mr. DeVito.
Just a point of clarity, unlike other commission appointments that come from the mayor, as per state law, the commission nominates the commissioners. So, Mr. Henke came as a result of the vote of the CAPC commission to ask that the council approve him for a seat.
Mr. Perkypile?
Well, in that case, I move that we approve his application.
Second.
You for a discussion on it? All in favor? Oh, Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Henke is in. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody has in their packets hospital, parks, HDC, and cemetery reports? No, cemetery, I don't know. I think everybody else is in there.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, on fire station is getting a new roof this next month, apparently?
Hopefully, yes.
That's what, I guess we've allocated the funds for that?
The weather holds. I think he has it in his budget.
It was already in?
For the old fire department, I think he has it in his budget.
From, it was already budgeted to be done this year in our budget the first of the year, is that what you're saying?
No, I think this was kind of an emergency. It fell through. The roof fell through, and I think he found the money within his budget to take care of it.
Okay. So, they're not asking for anything else, or?
Yes, sir.
And that's this station across the street?
Yes, across the street.
That needs a roof, there's no doubt.
Definitely need a roof. It's a daylight threat. Okay. Moves us on to public comments. We'll check and see if we have any public comments. How you doing, sir? One person, okay. Would be Melissa Herndon. How are you? Is that good for you?
Uh-huh, that's great. Melissa Franklin Herndon. And I'm here to, I don't really know Mr. McAvoy, but I'm here to speak on the property that Parks and Planning is wanting to turn into a bike trail or a hiking trail. Now, I lived on the property up until 1970. My mother lived there until in the mid-'80s, and her family bought it in the '30s. Now, my mother told me the story that her mother maintained that pathway herself. She would rake, hoe, whatever necessary to make it walkable for them to use to get down to Armstrong Street. So, it was never maintained by the city, was never used by anyone except our family. Now, my mother and father, after my grandmother passed, and they remained on the property, and kids growing up there, we used it to get down to town, to walk to school, things like that. So, that was the only use that it ever got. I doubt if the city even knew that the property was there, because it was never used by anyone other than our family. So, to make it into a bike trail or a hiking trail, that would be suicidal. It goes to nowhere now. They have already given away the bottom part of that property, so you can't get down on Armstrong anymore. So, it actually goes to nowhere. And try to develop the land around the house for maybe hiking or biking, it's too costly for the city, the taxpayers here, and maybe even the visitors if they wanted to put on another tax for Parks, you know? So, I don't see any purpose of this hiking or biking trail. So, what I'm here to ask you all to do tonight is consider this, vote on it, hopefully in Mr. McAvoy's favor. Let him have peace of mind that he can enjoy the property that he's bought to live on, and live in the house, and love it as long, as I did for 21 years. And I just hope that you will consider this, that it's just really not a good use for a bike or hiking trail. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, no other public comments? All right, that'll move us on to unfinished business.
Unless, excuse me, unless the matter of closing the streets is, I think it may have been moved to public comments.
He's getting ready to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, forgive me time.
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. All right. It's been voted on to move number one, unfinished business number one, to the first would be vacation request of Hartman and McCune.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Yes, sir.
I would like to allow the gentleman that's here to go ahead and make a statement on that issue and pick it up.
Okay. Now, you've got the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And ladies and gentlemen of the council.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Jim Crouch. I'm an attorney from Springdale, and thank you for letting me appear before the city council on this matter. I represent Mr. McAvoy, Mr. Gullidge, who live at 18 Chestnut Street here in Eureka Springs, and they have asked that you close a portion of Hartman and a portion of McCune Streets that is adjacent to their properties. They filed a petition or an application with the city back in July. As your procedure requires, we went before the Parks Commission, met with the Parks Commission. They set it for a public hearing. We had a public hearing on October the 21st. At that hearing, people appeared for and against it, and the Parks Commission voted to recommend that McCune, that we had requested that be closed, be closed, but voted against closing Hartman. The primary reason was that they thought that perhaps there might be a need for a trail there. There is a, an area that's just south of this called Mooney Springs Reservation. It's on the map. I've traced that for a bit and tried to find a spring there. I could never find it. There's no features that, you know, Eureka Springs has many beautiful features, landscapes, springs, rock features. Could find no outcropping of rocks, no stream bed, no water coming out of the ground. Now, it could be there, but I just couldn't find it. But in any event, the Parks Commission did not think it should be closed. We went before the planning commission, as is, again, your recommendation that we do. We met with them, I believe it was two weeks ago, and Ms. Blankenship explained, they just didn't vote on it. They didn't have that many members there. They had tried to table it, because someone from the Parks Commission came and said that they were going to come up with a master street, or a master trail plan. The fact is that the, as far as I know, there's no official master trail plan for Eureka Springs. This is not on any trail map that Eureka Springs has published. Now, there was a bit of confusion. I only have one of these, but, and I know you can't see it, but I'll pass it around if you want to see it. When the Parks Commission sent this to the planning commission, they sent it with a...
That's what you had there.
It's different.
No, it's the one that we sent to you to agree upon.
Right, but I want to explain this.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah. I think, are you Mr. Levine?
I am.
Okay. He's got a corrected version, but when this was sent to the planning commission, it showed that our request was to close all of Hartman Street and all of McCune Street. Now, I thought that when we went to the Parks Commission, it was clear that we only wanted to close that part that was adjacent to McCune, excuse me, adjacent to my client's property, just a portion of McCune and Hartman. I don't know if the Parks Commission was confused by that or not, but in any event, we're not asking that all of the street be closed, just that portion that's next to blocks 122 and 123. And I think that is now, as Mr. Levine says, been corrected. And I think, I see some of you with a packet. If any of you don't have the original map that we presented with our petition, we've got a map that shows the portions of the street that we want to close. It's that portion that's in yellow, and actually, I think you have a better copy than I do. So, it's our position that this has never been opened, as Ms. Herndon said, it's never been maintained as a public street. It was actually platted in the Riley and Armstrong survey, which I believe was 1885. To my knowledge, it's never been opened since that time, but, and I don't know if your map shows it or not, but a portion of Hartman Street actually was closed 60 years ago. And as best I can tell, it would run through the Hyde Piper Bar if Hartman Street was not closed. But, and if you look at my map, and I don't know if it's, how well it's depicted on your map, or maybe not, but the part that I have highlighted in pink down toward Main Street, I think that's Main Street, has already been closed in 1952. So, you can see that Hartman is, just does not go through. The, again, the position of the petitioners is that although certainly trails are important, they're important to every city, and particularly important to Eureka Springs, but this would be very impractical to build a trail on. The hike from down near the bar up to my client's property, and I think if you've been out there, you might have seen that it's basically through a ravine. And it's very steep, very difficult, and very rocky. And in fact, I'll pass around a photograph from down at the bar that shows the terrain. And it doesn't really depict it as, I don't think, as rough as it is. I think it would be impractical to build a trail there. I think ADA would be almost impossible to comply with. It'd be very expensive, and, you know, I think from a safety standpoint, it wouldn't be good to start a trailhead from a bar where people could walk up through a neighborhood that's not lit, that's full of rocks, that's very difficult terrain, to get to a potential spot at Mooney Springs. The fact is that the way we have proposed this, you could, because we haven't closed all of Hartman, you could still get to Mooney Springs by another, another street or another way, particularly the lower part of Hartman. Or, it actually fronts on Klein Street, and I think Klein is not open, but you could open that up and go to it that way. So, it's our position that it would be unsafe, it would be uneconomical, too expensive, too difficult to build a trail there. And the fact is, that is, again, as far as I know, Eureka Springs and the Parks Commission, although they do an excellent job and take care of the parks that are open, there's no park plan for this, and there's no trail plan for this. So, we would ask that you entertain an ordinance and pass an ordinance to close that part of McCune Street and that part of Hartman Street that are adjacent to my client's property. Now, we did originally have a request to close a portion of an unnamed alley, and we have since dropped that. It was between McCune and Hartman. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mr. McAvoy is here to answer questions. Certainly, yes, sir.
A couple of things.
Yep.
Start with, I assume, I haven't driven down to this, the old Franklin place in a long time, but it's, are your access by Cross Street, is that correct?
Yes, and we're asking that Cross Street be left open. That is the entrance into our client, to my client's property.
And then, and then block 151 that fronts on Hartman Street, are they, are they, the owners of block 151, are they also included in this request?
Well, they were, they were notified of it. All the adjacent landowners that front on the street that were asking to be closed were notified of it. That's the, as I recall, it's the Matthews Trust and the Helen Cross heirs, I believe. And to my knowledge, they have not expressed any objection to it. So, they, our proposal is that each side would get half the street.
That's, that's the way it works.
Obviously, that's the only fair way to do it.
And that's the way it works.
Sure.
Chestnut is open?
Well, that's my understanding. You certainly live here, and you may know more than I do, but I understand that's why we didn't ask that Chestnut be closed, is because it's open.
Where does the house sit?
The house sits basically on block 122, just next to McCune Street.
Right here.
Here.
Right here.
Yeah. I'll pass this around. I think it may be part of your packet.
No, that's not in here.
Okay. Let me, I've got more comments.
This is what Bruce provided here. This is the bigger map that Bruce...
Well, I actually have a portion of a survey. It shows the house, it's not a great copy, but it shows the house just next to McCune Street on block 122, more or less on blocks 2 and 3 of that block.
Well, the problem, I see, is that without having something from the Cross and Matthews heirs that, you know, because they're a beneficiary of this closing as well, but they may want the street open, I don't know.
Well, I've talked to John Cross, and he said he didn't have any objection to it.
Okay.
And I think that the, and Mr. Weaver can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the council has the power to close streets. You have the inherent power and authority to close streets regardless of whether or not the adjacent landowners have agreed. Now, there is a statute that allows streets to be closed if they hadn't ever been open for more than five years. I tried to go under that, but we didn't get everybody to agree, so.
Well, I, you know, and you may be right that with Mr. Cross, that's his feelings, but, you know, I think we need something in writing to that effect, that that's, that they, you know, that they want to do that, because they would be receiving that other half, and I don't know, you know, I don't have anything to verify that they're interested in doing that. So, you know, I don't, I think we'd need a commitment, because they are recipients of one half of that street. And then, secondly, before I'd make any decision, I need to do a site visit myself and get a look at it.
Yes, sir.
It's obvious the reason McCune Street is agreed on vacating. What's the reason why the property owner wants to vacate Hartman Street?
Well, if you, thank you, that's a good question. If you look at this, and I don't know if everybody got a copy of this survey, there's a circle drive that comes into his property, their property, from Cross Street, and it doesn't really show Cross Street, but I submit to you that if you look at this survey, this little path right here is Cross Street. So, and a lot of people use that thinking it's a public road. We contend that it's not, because it's on private property. It's a turnaround for the benefit of that property. If you move the street 15 feet to the east a bit, then you really kind of get most of that circle drive within the confines of his property. And it would benefit his property to be able to control it, to control access. Plus, the city has never really maintained that, that street. There are trees there that are, some of which frankly are rotten and dead, and could fall, could fall on his house. It would present an opportunity for my clients to maintain the trees within the right-of-way and see that they don't present a hazard. But one of the hazards being that there's not, there's not an easement in the street, but there's a power line that runs next to it from the main source to my client's house. Well, there's dead trees that overshadow that street that could fall on it. By the way, the utilities, Source Gas and, is it Carroll County Electric? Swepco, I'm sorry.
Either one.
Neither one of those object to this. Of course, I sent notice to the City of Eureka Springs, too. I didn't hear back from them, but.
Okay. I'm totally confused. I know Amity well. My, like, best friend lived there for years. But the part of Amity that it looks like it should be on here is what's saying Cross Street. Is this, if you turn off a wall onto Amity, and you go down like, let's say, a block worth, that's where you get the circle driveway. Franklin's house was down off on the right. Are you following?
Me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That would be Amity up here that does this. So, what I'm confused about is why is it showing Cross leading into this?
It turns into Cross. The Cross is...
Even though you turn off a wall onto Amity, the curve?
Cross goes down there.
Whoa, 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 wait. Let's hold it down, okay?
Yeah, she lives next to where my girlfriend...
But you gotta, you gotta address them if you want them to talk.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask you, when you turn off a wall, you turn left onto Amity.
Correct.
Where does Cross start?
What are you talking about? No.
If somebody wants to speak.
Come up here, KJ.
Okay.
If she's going to address, you can come up here.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So, Mickey, if you go down Amity Street in front of my house, and as soon as it starts making that rounded curve, that is actually Cross Street.
Oh.
KJ, say your name.
KJ Zumlott.
Because it was showing Amity way off on the side, and I'm like...
Right, some maps have Amity.
Oh, I remember Amity.
Right, all the way around, and some, the older maps, Cross Street is platted there. It's the same exact street, Mickey, as you go around the corner to my house.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, it makes a little more sense here.
Thank you. Okay. Who's next?
Mr. Perkypile? Yes. So, what I'm gathering here is Bruce Levine, you indicated that McCune Street would be okay to vacate.
That's what God probably should talk about.
Okay, okay. But let me just step further past that. But we, I do think we have a problem with this section of Hartman Street, because we don't have any firm written testimony or application from the Cross Matthews family there for that. And I think, I think we probably, I agree with Mr. McClung, that we probably need to have that before we could go any further on that particular street. But I don't see that we have a problem with McCune Street.
May I respond to that?
Certainly.
And I certainly understand what you're saying. And I certainly understand what you're saying, but I think as a legal matter, you don't have to have it. If that's your preference, I understand that. But I think legally, and Mr. Weaver can correct me if I'm wrong, that you don't have to get the consent of someone to give them land. But I hear what you're saying.
Well, I think it'd be apropos.
That's just my opinion.
Mr. Mitchell.
I'd like to ask our Director of Parks a question, please. In reference to Hartman Street, sir?
Yes, sir.
In reference to your undeveloped and undefined master plan yet, the one that's out there. If, down on Main Street, if Hartman doesn't go all the way through, and some of it is already vacated, because there's a building there, and it looks like it's not convenient to get from Hartman down to Main Street, what would be the value of that section of Hartman Street that they're asking to vacate for Parks, if you can't really get to it from a good location?
If I may answer, and let's separate this into two parts of Hartman. We have a Hartman that goes basically in a northerly direction, and we have Hartman south. Hartman north, if you look on the green, the light green section, and I also will put in a plug, that one of the reasons we can't get to certain places is because we vacated back a few years ago, and we've already seen cases in the past where vacations have come back to haunt us. In this case, going down Hartman Street and then following along on Chestnut or Francis Street, and then you'd be heading west, westerly, and then you can hook back up with Klein Street and then come down to Main Street. So, what we're trying to create with these trails are loops, and that's what people look for when they go onto a trail. They started a trailhead where it'd be at Hart's Grocery Store, and they walk down Wall Street, they go to Amity Street, they walk down Amity Street, they take Hartman Street, or they'd come along here on Chestnut, go above the Conway Spring Reservation, go to Bat Street, go to Ozark Street, and they loop back around. So, what we're trying to create is a network of trails that make a loop.
Question then.
Yes.
Since you've looped all the way around, say Hartman Street that's green and it's got the little red around it for vacating is gone. And you said you come over to Klein Street. So, we go down here to Armstrong, and you get on Klein, and you kind of walk up it, and then you turn left, and then you walk down. It looks like a little alley. So, you really wouldn't have to go all the way around Chestnut, Francis, and then back up Hartman. You could go right through that alley and get right back on Hartman.
True. That would be another way to do it.
So, there is an option to this.
There are several alternatives, and that's what we're trying to keep open, are these alternatives. Now, let me talk about south on Hartman Street, and back to something Mr. Crouch said about easements and a notification of landowners and their permission. Now, David Shown told us that, when, and David Shown's a municipal league attorney, told us that the city may vacate property under 14, whatever it is. However, if a landowner feels his access is being taken, then the city is, in effect, taking access, whether it's the best access or he has another access, he or she, then, that is taking, and that person can ask for compensation for that taking of access. Now, on the south part of Hartman, Mr. Gorrell, who is in blue, feels his access is being taken by closing that small portion of Hartman Street, which would make it impossible for him to come down. The city parks has a spring there. That would take away our access. So, it would take away the city's own access. Not only is it an access, but it's the best access, because coming in from these other streets is a long way around the barn. This Hartman Street, from Cross to the end of Mr. Gorrell's property, I can drive it in my little two-wheel pickup. It's flat, it's 30 feet wide, and it's level, and it could be ADA accessible.
Question. By this map that I have here, and what's drawn in here, outlined in red on this map, it just goes right behind KJ's property to the center of her first lot there on Cross Street. Is that what you're talking about, as far as south Hartman?
Yes, yes.
Not further south than that?
No. The only portion that is being asked to be vacated south of Cross Street is just that little area, right there, which effectively blocks access along Hartman going south.
And also to my back gate from my property on the lower end, it would definitely block the gate to the front.
And that has been strongly, Mr. Gorrell and the Parks Commission both come out against vacating, certainly vacating that portion.
Well, you're talking about just the square right here, right, right in front of Cross.
Correct. It's just adjacent to where it says Cross Street.
Why don't we just cut it off? I mean, if Hartman is not going to be used or can't be accessed any other way, I mean, could we just, you know, stop the application for vacation right there?
That would satisfy the Gorrells and the Zumwalt's.
Okay.
But it still doesn't satisfy Parks on the north side of Hartman Street, which we would like to continue to have a, the opportunity and the potential to put a trail in there.
But again, there's an alternative to that trail.
You have an alley.
You have an alley in all kinds of...
We don't, we don't know yet if that's the best alternative.
Mr....
KJ, you're going to have to hush her.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question for the attorney. Again, why didn't, why did they not request the closing of that section of Chestnut that is, which they own on both sides?
My client is here, and he'll, he would better answer that. I understand that a portion of it's open, but I, you all know your city better than I do. I don't, I don't know for sure.
Well, apparently, it's open. Or Bruce would have notified us that it was closed.
Can you talk about Chestnut that shows on the survey?
Yeah, right here.
On the city, on the city plat.
Oh, I did. I can't answer.
May I let my client answer that?
Sure.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jim McAvoy. I reside at 18 Chestnut here in Eureka Springs. The question was why I didn't want or apply for Chestnut to be closed, because in my understanding, asking for Hartman Street to be closed, then that would, that would just be an extra process. Yes, I wouldn't mind it being closed, because a portion of Chestnut Street there, where it's directly behind the Sleepy Hollow Bed and Breakfast here on Main Street, there's a, over a two-story drop, that I saw Mr. Levine walking down about a week ago on Sunday. And one of my major concerns with him wanting to loop a trail encircling our house is the grade on that hill goes from about 30 degrees to about 40 degrees and even steeper in some areas, and there are cliffs on there. It's a very dangerous. And I do own property on both sides of Chestnut Street, but I don't own property on, I guess, what side would that be? The, on the north side? The, where you can see in Lot 121 that borders Chestnut Street, right before you get to Klein Street, there's 1, 2, 3, 4 lots that I don't own property on that side.
Right. Well, what I'm, I mean, it's, and like I say, I can't do anything until I go down there and do a visual anyway. But from Lot 40 back to the vacated part of, from Lot 40, in Lot 21, in Block 121, over to the already vacated part of Hartman...
Oh, okay.
That strip that you own there, Chestnut or Francis Street, is, you know, it's a gutshot in your property. I mean, it would make sense to me that, that would be something that you would, that you would have requested more than Hartman, because you, it's not Hartman, you don't own both sides of that. So, it's not, you know, the people on the other half of that, unless, unless they're a part of the petition, in my mind, and historically, it can't be done.
Well, do you really think they would have an objection to obtaining 15 feet of the road?
Well, you know, if, if, if they're a part of the petition to request it, or if they provide a letter stating that they're not opposed to it, then, you know, I could look at it that way. But until I've got that, no, I can't personally. And this is not my first go-around with these. Trust me.
And I'm not disputing any of that. I'm sure we could ask for that. Mr. Mayor.
Well, if I may just respond to that. I mean, they're entitled to notice. They got notice by registered mails, return receipt requested. I filed their green card with Mr. Levine. So, they got notice. So, that's the reason that you give notice to people, so they can come and object, or they can say, "I want it," or "I don't want it." I would submit that the failure to object is an acquiescence in what we're requiring or asking that you do, and you shouldn't require them to, to agree, because sometimes you can't get a hold of folks. I mean, you, all you can do is just send them a notice, and they may or may not respond. You may not get them to a meeting. They may not, they may be out of town. In fact, I think maybe the Matthews family is an out-of-town family. So...
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McAvoy, on Chestnut Street, is that developed, or is that just like McCune is right in the middle of your property?
It's right in the middle. It's never been, it's never been vacated or closed, but it's also never been open or driven on.
Okay. So, it's not like a road?
Correct.
Okay. So...
And, and two, I thought it was important that I would say, when I bought this property in May of 1996 from Century 21 from Karen Kinsel, it was represented to me that these were unopened, streets that would never be opened in Eureka Springs. I didn't have anything to worry about. There would never be people driving on it, walking on it, you know, that's, it was, it's just part of the uniqueness and some of the quirks of Eureka Springs because of how it was designed, and it was nothing to worry about. So, someone had asked at one of the earlier meetings, why didn't I, why now? Why am I asking for this now? I've been working on this for quite some time, and I feel it's very important, because as to, Mickey, where you're very confused by looking at a map, think about tourists driving down Amity, which turns into Cross, coming onto my property, which is a private drive, getting stuck there. I happen to call tow trucks. They get stuck in the middle of my driveway, preventing me from leaving. I have people ask, "Is this arsenic and old lace? Am I the Chamber of Commerce?" Those are major reasons why. If you're as confused as you are, imagine someone who's never been here approaching that place for the first time, and that would be my concern for a trail coming through there, is because how would a person know, a tourist know, what is the trail and what's my land, just as the same problem we have up on the hill?
Okay. Well, my biggest question for you is, if both McCune and Chestnut run right through the middle of your property, why don't you ask for McCune and Chestnut rather than Hartman? Because Hartman appears to just be along an edge of your property, whereas these two actually cut through it.
Well, at Hartman Street, actually, you're, it goes all up through Block 122, which I own, and 123, all the way up to that alleyway right there. So, that is a 15-foot section there. One of the, something that's never really been brought to light is if you do have a site visit and you come out there, as Mr. Levine has been out there many times, Hartman Street, when you come up from the Pied Piper, mysteriously, when you get to Ms. Zumwalt's property, Hartman Street narrows down to 15 feet. So, that's, I don't understand why Parks is fighting so hard for a trail through there when there's only 15 feet of the road that's accountable for right now. And I will quote Mr. Levine in saying, "He doesn't know what happened to the other half of the street, and he doesn't want to know what happened to the other half."
Okay. But, so, go back to my question. Why aren't you going for the two pieces that go directly through your property?
Well, I, I would like that.
Well, I would just, you know, off the cuff...
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to go say, "I'll do this for that," or whatever. This was our original proposition, our request, Mickey, and a future date, I may ask for Chestnut Street to be closed.
See, I, it just makes more sense to me that you do those two instead of the side, especially with the problems coming in.
Okay.
A question for the attorney. Since the agenda topic tonight was vacating a portion of Hartman and McCune, since there is no, from Parks or anybody else, problems with vacating McCune.
Correct.
No.
Could we, can we split that and table the Hartman side and deal with the McCune side?
You could. I think at this point that the proposed ordinance that has been drafted by the attorney for the petitioner doesn't exactly procure, it has both pieces in it.
Okay.
So, it would have to be modified in order to do that at this point.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm not going to make a motion right now to table this, but I don't see why the city can't just post a sign up there that says, "Dead end, no turnaround," whatever. I mean, that, to me, the way I'm hearing this is, the crux of your problem is you have people driving down your driveway. To me, rather than going through all of this of vacating property that both Parks is not in favor of, and Planning will revisit this? Are you done with it? Planning will revisit this. So, at this time, I move to table this until our next meeting. Second.
Need for a discussion on it?
Does that include having both lawyers' input?
The motion is to table this until our next meeting.
Need for a discussion on this? Okay. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Let's postpone till next meeting. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Then moves us on to number two, which will be the Gunnell's group tour application. Motion to discuss.
So, move, second.
Floor is open.
We have it here in our packet.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, you should have a copy of it.
And what do you need from us?
Approval.
Approval?
Mr. Mayor, this is what we've been going over here for the last couple of meetings. Is there anything different in this application other than what we've spoken about?
That's in our world.
This is the formal application for tour group franchise. All the fees have been provided, paid for.
Marked right on the front page.
Okay. Well, unless somebody else has an objection, I'd like to move to approve this application.
Second.
Need for a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most of you care. Moves us on to number one, which is a workshop for ordinance 2189. Motion to discuss.
Seven minutes?
Second.
Okay. And I'm making sure I'm on the right page here, because, okay.
Yeah. Get our calendars out.
Get our calendars out.
So, according to Diane Wilkerson, that particular workshop is scheduled for December ninth, prior to the meeting on December ninth. That would start at five o'clock and end prior to six.
Any further?
I'd like to make a motion to have the workshop, December ninth at five o'clock.
Second.
Made in second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oop.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. Moves us on to number two, discussion of Ordinance Ninety-One, uh, sorry, Twenty-One Ninety-One, which has been amended.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Perkypile.
Mr. Attorney, you have revised this to exclude, let's see, the Carnegie Library, as we asked you to.
That is the intent of what the new language that I've added to. If you are going to add that language, of course, we're going to have to, um, propose that as an amendment, approve that as an amendment, and then move on on approval of the whole ordinance. So, that, but that is what the language is there for, at your request, the Carnegie Library be excluded or exempted because of the showings that they do in the lower room there.
Mr. McClung.
We haven't read this, have we read this before, as far as-
We had one read on it.
We've had one reading on it, so, okay.
But I think that was before it was amended to-
Okay, I make a motion that we amended and, 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 uh, let's see. Do I need to go ahead and, and, uh, put it up for reading, for the second reading, and do it that way?
As amended.
As amended.
Uh, first, you would put it up for reading, uh, and you could do that by title only if you so chose. And then, once it has been approved for reading, uh, and read, then you could propose that new language uh, as an amendment to it. And if that received the necessary votes, then you could proceed to a final approval of the second reading as amended.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we read Ordinance Number Twenty-One Ninety-One by title only.
By suspending-
Second.
By suspending the rules, of course.
There you go. I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, I'm going to take a real call vote on that.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Six zero.
I'd like to make a motion, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to, I'm in such a hurry tonight.
Yes.
Ordinance Twenty-One Ninety-One, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code to establish an additional conditional use permit by permit, excuse me, an additional conditional use by permit in quiet use commercial C-three zones.
I would like, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance Twenty-One Ninety-One on its second reading, subject to an amendment. No?
Amend it first, and then make your second motion to approve it as amended. But amend it first if you're going to amend it. So you make a motion to amend, uh, to add, and then you would put that language in and change the section numbers below it.
That's what I want to do, exactly.
And then, then secondly, you'd have to have a second vote after that to approve the whole document as amended.
And I second his motion.
Okay, go ahead and get that motion down.
Um, in fragments. I seem like we'd be able to just read the new document, but-
Well, to, probably the way Mr. McClung's motion should be worded would be that Mr. McClung moves to add the new section three?
Three.
Section three.
Uh, and then read the language of the new section three, and to amend the, uh, other sections below that by giving them the new section number four, five, I believe, six. Four and five? Four and five.
And I'll second Mr. McClung's motion.
As, as stated by Mr. Weaver.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Actually, I do have it this time.
Okay.
All right. So, because it's so odd, does it require a roll call?
Doesn't require one, but it certainly wouldn't-
Okay.
Hard to have one.
There's a side of caution to do one, yeah.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yeah.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Six zero. Okay, amended section three, that the Carnegie Library, located at its present location on Spring Street, shall be exempt from the restriction created by this ordinance as long as it shall remain a public library at its present location. Motion to approve, is that what you need next?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Okay, then we'll take a voice vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Now accomplish your second reading.
Okay. Any further on this one? If not, we'll move on. Thank you. Uh, next is number three, discussion of Ordinance Twenty-One Ninety-Five, the Land Bank Second Reading, motion to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Perkypile. Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to suspend the rules in place, Ordinance Number Twenty-One Ninety-Five, on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Uh, and Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance Number Two-One Nine-Five, an ordinance for the creation of a land bank committee for use in disposing of certain unneeded properties and obtaining certain other needed properties, and for other purposes.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd approve Ordinance Number Twenty-One Ninety-Five on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. McClung?
Okay, uh, again, in section two, I have problems with number two and three, uh, conforming open spaces, uh, areas adjacent to spring reservation, trail parks, greenways, other spaces. This is, um, talking about, uh, along with the non-conforming open spaces in number three, where they can, the city can sell those. I think that number two, that conforming spaces, you know, if, if, if it's, if it's good for the city, should also be available for sale, and not restricting it only to, uh, the non-conforming. So that's, that's one problem I have, and then again with section seven, you know, I'm very strong on this, in that, uh, that the three hundred and twenty acres, where the city is, it's okay, and the city has the right to sell that right-of-way, uh, is not equal with the land that the city also controls, as far as the streets and alleys, where they cannot charge. So it's, it's, although they have the right to do that, I think it's a right that the city should not exercise and charge, uh, uh, on these vacations. I do believe that they, that, you know, Parks should maybe be entitled to a processing fee, uh, or filing fee, whatever you want to call it, um, uh, you know, a nominal fee of a couple hundred bucks or something like that, for a processing fee, but, but I, and that would be in both areas of the city, in that three twenty, or outside of that, but as far as as, uh, uh, being paid, uh, for those, uh, right-aways, I'm strongly against that.
Mr. Weaver.
I would like to caution councilmen of using the word "right-of-way," because in the three twenty, it's not actually right-of-way, it's, uh,
Okay.
Ownership.
Okay.
And two, I would ask that the councilmen consider that, uh, if you remove that restriction here, that the councilman may also want to risk, remove it in the other section of the, uh, municipal code, which is adopted by a other ordinance, which requires a fee to be paid for those sections, because otherwise, you're going to have a conflict within the codebook.
Well, I think, I, I do agree that that would be necessary to do, because that, you know, I, I have never believed that that was an equitable position, anyway. So, uh, yeah, anything that would be in conflict, I think, didn't, it'd get written that way, anything that conflict, uh, didn't it
It prob-
Bring that out, or, or it can be made referenced, anyway, somewhere.
It should probably be referenced directly and, and removed.
That, well, that would be fine. Uh, I just, I just, you know, just because the city has the right to charge that, doesn't mean that it is right.
Mr. Mitch.
With all due respect for Mr. McClung, and I do understand his position, I think if we've owned that land since eighteen hundreds, we have the right to sell it, and we need to sell it and collect our money.
Ms. Snyder.
Um, wasn't it pointed out, the last time we discussed this, that the three twenty acres, we own, the rest of it, we have like a permanent lease? However you want to word that.
It's not a permanent lease, but it, it's a ri- right to use that land until we decide that it's not usable by the city.
Okay, so, another, the point I'm making is, one piece of land we own, the other one we do not own, which is why some would have to pay and some wouldn't. Now, I agree that, you know, making just a flat amount, a very reasonable amount, that's not a problem with me. But, one piece we own, one piece we don't, and to me, that's why there's a difference.
Mr. Weaver.
I would caution, although the code now calls for a specific floor, but I would caution the council by setting a flat fee that is never to be changed in any respect, because some of that land could potentially be worth more money, and if it is worth more money, the council, by giving it away or charging less, could potentially, uh, put itself at risk of being charged through a lawsuit with, uh, disposing of city property without just compensation. I don't know that any of those streets are worth, or alleys are worth more, but if the land underneath them, for some reason, was to be worth more, and a future council simply followed a hundred dollars as the fee, or twenty dollars as the fee, or whatever, they could potentially put themselves at risk. Right now, the way it's written with a floor and no ceiling, uh, you have the right to charge more if that land is worth more.
Mr. Perkypile.
Well, the whole concept behind this land bank was to raise money by selling land that the city couldn't use, to buy other land that was more usable, let's say. And, uh, could I ask Mr. Levine to step to the microphone? For instance, the property behind my house on Main Street, and all those houses on Main Street, that's green zone property, that's city-owned property. Correct?
Correct, it's city-owned property, it's not green zone.
It, it, there's no access to it. And so, those would be typical type lots, and all the people that, that have houses on that. You related to me that the, the method would be like a bidding process on that, correct?
That would be my understanding, that it would have to be divested in a sealed bid situation.
And you still anticipate that that will happen on a lot of these properties like this?
I do.
A lot of this property that the city controls? Uh, and the intention is to raise money to get, or to use for other parts, for parks, or for public works, or for whoever.
That is my nefarious plan, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. McClung.
My point of contention is not parcels of land, it's the streets and alleyways that fall in the three hundred and twenty acres, that the city would not be doing anything with them unless somebody requested a vacation, you know, that kind of deal, and, and they're not suitable for anything else. That's, that's what, all I'm talking about, I understand that pieces of land, parcels can, and that have value to it. Absolutely, I have no problem with that. That's why I suggest that in, in the, in the beginning part of it, in number two and three, that, that conforming open spaces, that are deemed that the city would not have a use for, could also be made available for purchase by the public. But the alleyways and the streets are no different in the three hundred and twenty acres than they are in the other areas of the city that, that people don't, they're not, you know, they get the same service. There's nothing special about the three hundred and twenty acres, except the fact that the city owns that right-of-way. But so what? So what? You know, it's still an inequality for those people to have to be penalized and pay a premium to, to purchase that street or alleyway, whereas those who do not belong in that three hundred and twenty acres, yet reside inside the city limits, have to, you know, have, have the benefit of living outside the three hundred and twenty acres. I don't like it. It's not fair.
Mr. Weaver, Mr. Snyder, stand by, Mr. Weaver, go ahead.
Uh, as a point of law, the city owns those streets, and therefore, the person who adjoins them did not purchase those streets. In the other instance, the adjoining property owners actually own the land underneath those areas, but it has been taken by the city for use for city purposes, so they actually have paid for and purchased the land that sits under those, uh, right-ways. And so they have made a different choice in the way that they have purchased their land outside the three hundred and twenty, as opposed to inside the three hundred and twenty acres.
Mr. Weaver, may I ask you a question? What is the process to vacate a piece of property outside of the three hundred and twenty acres? As opposed to inside the three hundred and twenty acres, what's the difference?
The difference is simply in-
What, the difference in the process, sir?
There is, there is a difference in the process at this time, that you must pay for what you do not own, rather than receive what you actually do own, but has been taken by the city.
No, that's not a difference in the process, it's the same. They go through the same steps, do they not?
But they're gaining something greater than the other person.
They have no control of it until it's vacated by the city in either circumstance, direct or not.
They have the right to convey it.
Pardon me?
They have the right to convey it if they're outside the three hundred and twenty. They do not have the right to convey it if they're inside the three hundred and twenty, because they don't own it, the city does.
But they have no, they do not have the ability to use it outside the three hundred and twenty acres, do they, can they, can I plant a garden on the street? Just like, uh, uh, the, the people on Palopinto that were closing? What's the difference?
Obviously, uh, there is some dis- there is some distinction, because the city can go through there and tear up their garden, or go through there and tear up their building, but obviously, over the last many years in this town, people have often built structures on those at their own peril, and many have, uh, used them as their yards at their own peril.
In both, in both sections, in either the three hundred and twenty or the, the other areas, so, there is no difference. You know, I've lived here, I've experienced this, uh, you know, you can argue it all you want, I can argue it all I want. It's, it's not equal.
I don't choose to argue it with you, I choose to warn you honestly that to do- I don't choose to argue it with you, I choose to warn you honestly, that to give away that without compensation is to take away a city asset without compensation, which is an action that can be challenged in a court of law. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you that it's inequitable in some ways, but it is different in the way the law treats it. And we're very unique in Eureka Springs, because we did own that 320 to begin with.
And that's my whole point of contention, that we have the right to sell it, but that does not make it right.
Okay, let's move on. Ms. Snyder.
Maybe a solution. Is it legally possible to separate, in Wordage, the alleyways and whatnot from real property? Okay, D use the land behind their building as that being land, as opposed to an unused alleyway or street? Can we separate those two, and say for these alleyways and streets, there is no charge, or there's minimal, however it is that we work it out with the outside of 320, and keep land as a separate thing that you pay value on? Can we separate those two items and have two different prices? That would do what Terry is saying is, you know, uneven.
Well, the 320, the, the roads or alleys and streets that are unopened under them, are basically just land at this point.
But you see the difference in land, I mean.
But they're not, they're not probably usable land to anybody but excepted an adjoining property owner, because they're, in most instances, not wide enough to be used for construction. There are probably some of them that may be, that were planned originally as arterial streets. I don't know, I haven't really looked at all of them, but if some of them are as wide as 50 feet, they'd be as wide as some other lots in town. And an arterial street often is planned at 45 to 50 feet.
Okay, but do you see what I'm saying in, in differentiating between actual property-type land and an alleyway? Okay, Angelo, our traffic cop, he lived in my neighborhood, he went to sell his house and yard, and found out there was an easement right square through the middle of his backyard. Okay, that had to be della. Now, it was an easement in the middle of his yard, there's no way, you know, house on one side, garage on the other, there's no way, this is real property, as opposed to the land that D is talking about. So can we differentiate between those two items, and come up with separate, separate procedures and financials?
Well, I think the code already does that, because it doesn't require someone outside the 300, and I think that's what Mr. McClung is objecting to, is that right now, it doesn't require someone outside the 320 acres to pay for the dirt that they already own, that they've not been allowed to fully use. And the people that are inside the 320, if they want the land that is under one of those alleys, or under one of those streets, they've got to pay for it.
I'd like to call the question.
Why, this is a very good discussion.
We've still got another reading, we're just...
So is it legally possible to separate? That's right?
Yes, yes. But Mr. DeVito's point of order is that we go ahead, we have a reading in standby, actually.
He called the question.
Okay, and he's called the question. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, because I would like my question answered first.
We have another reading.
I don't care, I'm tired of putting stuff off until the last minute. Let's deal with it the first time, and then we can go on from there.
We had a five to one, so it's, it's moving on.
The, we're to read the second reading, I mean, to approve it on the second reading, that's the vote we're to take.
So, we're voting on approval now?
Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Three, three.
Uh, D, Terry, Mickey?
That is correct.
Sounds to me there needs some, to be some clarity in there, so I'm not going, which means the motion fails.
Well, the motion fails, the bill fails too.
And we started over with the new number and new clarification.
To start it over, you will have to make a substantial change to it, you cannot simply assign it a new number.
Yeah, certainly make changes, so that would improve what we've been trying to get discussed here.
Substantial change.
All right.
It's the language in the law.
All right, moving on. Move to...
We just did. We didn't approve anything, then? What did, we didn't?
That, that ordinance, or that potential ordinance, has failed.
Okay.
Okay, moves on to...
Needed the words there.
Number four, this is a discussion of ordinance for business license in multifamily housing. Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Snyder.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, floor's open. Mr. Mitchell.
Our attorney has provided us a draft ordinance that hasn't been assigned a number that we received today or yesterday, I forgot which one, and a representative of planning is here that has intimate knowledge of, of what's contained in this, and can answer some of the questions that have been posed at prior meetings, since the chairperson of planning is, is not up to speed on, on this ordinance. So I'd like to ask Mr. Leswig to, to approach the microphone, and be available to answer any questions that council may have regarding this. There was a question, as I recall, in the past, does the owner of multifamily dwellings, if they have multiple family dwellings at different addresses, do they have to have a, does this ordinance require they have to have a business license for each multifamily at a separate address?
The original, excuse me, the original draft of this, and I'm not aware of any change that Mr. Weaver made, that negates it, requires a special, a separate license for each location.
Okay.
I may also, with the mayor's permission, have...
Yes, sir.
There is actually a district court case, which has made a ruling that is very on point with that, in which tourist lodging that are at different locations must bear separate business license. So there would be a, a finding from the district court, that I think would carry also over with what Mr. Leswig is saying here, that separate licenses would be required at separate locations. And, and there is an equivalent with certain businesses that have multiple locations within town, that require a different license.
Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
I'd like to continue, Mr. Mitchell, Mickey, and I'll leave it to you, please. The, the, one more time, Mr. Leswig, the intent of this was to bring the issue of multifamily housing, that it, it, up to the level of at least our tourist lodging and our bed and breakfast, and that there is, there's an applicable review of, of certificate of occupancy. I called Bobby Ray and asked him what was involved in a certificate of occupancy, and it's not very much, surprisingly. It was a smoke detector, egress, there was only two.
Fire extinguisher.
Yes, fire extinguisher, it was, it was minimal. Didn't have to have carbon monoxide, or, you know, any of that stuff, just the fire extinguisher and that. So, we're not, we're just basically, with this ordinance here, trying to establish, especially since this town has a lot of antiquated buildings that have been converted, that there is at least a minimal standard applied equally as in bed and breakfast and tourist lodging, to, to those that live in multifamily housing.
That is, that's true, Mr. Mitchell. I think I should make the point that when we started looking at this thing, the majority of multifamily housing units that we were looking at, were located in the R1 district. In the R1 district, a multifamily dwelling is a conditional use. Likewise, a B and B is a conditional use. So we guided, or we're guided on the precept that what is good for B and Bs is probably good for multifamily dwellings as well.
So the health, safety, and welfare that the council is responsible for is being applied to multifamily in this case?
Yes, which we think is a gap in, in the process right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, two points. Now, when we were discussing this before, it was said we can't, we have to be careful how we tread in regards to safety inspections, because of the private stuff. Is there any reason why we cannot make it our law, so to speak, that these safety inspections are done when you lose one renter, and before the new one comes in?
It becomes problematic at that point with whether you are violating the constitutional right against search and seizure.
If you, if they're going into a B and B and checking for stuff, why can't they go into multifamily housing and check in between renters, which means there's nobody there for whose toes to be stepped on?
Well, because the land is still owned by the owner, it's not necessarily owned by the occupant.
Uh-huh.
And you get into the same problem we had several years ago in this town, with when we were stringing the Christmas lights, and we were entering into some of these private businesses along here, and putting up Christmas lights, whether we were violating their property because we were entering into their property to put up the Christmas lights, even though everybody agreed they wanted to put up the Christmas lights, they didn't want people in their attics looking around to see what was in their attic. And there was threat at the time of litigation over the issue of whether it was violative of the constitution, and I think you are going to stir a nest if you start telling people you're going to come in and check every time the renter moves out.
I think, if I, if I could, Ms. Snyder, to refer to the same thing. In the case of a B and B, we require a new conditional use permit when there's a transfer of ownership.
We don't go in between each occupant. When one moves out, it begins seven days.
I thought it was like yearly time period or something.
No, it's, it's per ownership. I mean, if, if Mr. McClung bought a B and B, is part of him getting his first license, he'd have to submit conditional, or certificates of occupancy.
I thought it was like a five or 10-year period. Okay, so then in other words, on a multifamily housing, would someone would decide to start doing this, say, number one, have to have a business license, so number two, in order to get that, we can say, okay, we have to have it inspected for safety, right?
What we're saying, basically, in this document, is you have to have it in order to get the license.
That's what I, okay, that's what I'm saying.
Not we're not going to do it, but you have to have it.
Oh, you have to have the items that you have to have it inspected?
You have to have a certificate of occupancy in order to get a business license.
Okay. In order to get that, you have to have a safety inspection.
But you have to arrange for a safety inspection. City doesn't tell you, we're coming into your house to look, we're coming into your house to inspect, you have to invite the city in to do it in order to get a certificate of occupancy.
So if you want the occupancy, and therefore the license, you have to let them come in and inspect, okay?
You have to invite them in.
Okay, so in order...
Is that right, Mr.?
So what I'm seeing is, can we not do that for multifamily dwellings? Can we not follow that same criteria?
We're doing that.
That's what the ordinance that Mr. Weaver has written does.
Okay, but that's what I mean. So that's what we're working on now, so, well, then I'm confused, if that's what we're working on, why is there contention?
Contention, I think, is between what you stated, is, is to do it each time someone moves out, as opposed to here, it would be each time that a new business license was being issued, it wouldn't be each year, but it would be each time there's a change of occupant, owner, there would have to be a new occupancy, because there would be a new application for a, a new business license, right, and a renewal.
So previously, it hasn't been done at all, period?
Previously, there hasn't been a requirement for it at all.
Okay, now, is there any reason why with, if you have three multifamily dwellings, and you have to have three business licenses, is there any reason why we cannot make one amount, if, if one person owns three, can they not pay for the price of one business license and have it for all three? Rather than pay three times?
We currently charge, if you want to put in three McDonald's franchise, or three Mickey Snyder's in town, we would charge three business licenses. So to not charge it in the instance of multifamily, but to charge it for other businesses, would be inequitable, and would be then challengeable at law. We certainly charge it where we have multiple owners, one owner of multiple properties of the same type in town already. In fact, we've enforced that through the district court, as I said, a few years ago, against an individual who owned several rental properties that they used for vacation, properties in town, because they were only buying one business license, and they had 11 separate properties. And the district court found that they were required to buy 11 separate licenses, because they had 11 separate properties that did not adjoin, and therefore, they had basically 11 separate businesses.
Okay, so we cannot combine into one price?
Mr. McClung.
Okay.
Yeah, a certificate of occupancy is based on what? Are you saying, based on the same criteria as a bed and breakfast? Is that what you're, did I, is it, hear that right or wrong, or, so it has to be commercially wired and conduit?
No, that's not, that's not what a condition, a certificate of occupancy means in Eureka Springs.
And what does it mean?
It means inspection of the property to make sure there is a smoke detector, that there is a fire extinguisher, and what's the third thing, Mr.?
Egress, there's only three things that Bobby Ray says they look for.
There's three things he looks for.
So it has nothing to do...
With the building code.
It's not going to, as I understand it, get into whether it's properly plumb, wired...
So basically, all it is, is another avenue for the city to generate income?
No, it's to treat everybody in the city fairly. We charge everybody else a license, we charge people to have a certificate of occupancy who rent property to others. So we're saying, here's a segment where it wasn't treated fairly.
But if, if they own a, a single-family residence, and they rented out, what's the difference?
It's a single-family residence.
There's no difference.
Is a significant difference.
It's generating monthly income, what's the difference?
Well, Mr. McClung, if you want to charge for certificates of occupancy for rental property, it's the power of this council to do that.
That's right, it is.
So it's...
Mr. Mitchell.
Again, this was being looked at on the basis of health, safety, and welfare, and looking at multifamily, and knowing that a lot of these older homes have been carved up. And if you're in one of those unfortunate apartments that may be on the lower level, and don't have good egress, you might appreciate the fact you had a fire extinguisher, or an ability to get out of your apartment. And it seems if you, if you require tourist lodging and other places, you really ought to look, when you're carving up some of these old houses, that at least, we consider the certificate of occupancy, which is the minimal, not the maximum standards by any means. And that was it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, that, suddenly, I don't know. Are we saying that multifamily dwellings, if they're, some, some units are on the second floor of a building, or the third floor of a building, and they are rented out as multiple family dwellings, that they don't have to have a fire escape, or a way to get out?
They don't now?
Don't now.
Well, I think we should.
That's why, that's why the ordinance is before you.
I mean, is that not in this ordinance? I haven't seen it in this ordinance, and it didn't occur to me that it wasn't, until somebody mentioned it, but certainly, that should be part of the health and safety consideration. If you're going to rent out the second floor of a house, there's got to be a way to get out of there, other than the front door.
Mr. Weaver.
You may want to call your building official, Mr. Ray, forward and ask him in regard to that, but by requiring a certificate of occupancy, that is, the intent is that it will maintain that minimum standard, it will put a fire extinguisher in there, it will have him look to see that there is a way for them to get out, if there is a fire, and it would require a minimum, but if you want to know exactly what it would require, Mr. Leswig has tried to explain it, but I think maybe you want to ask your building official to further explain exactly what you get with a certificate of occupancy. But that is one of the things he's supposed to be looking for before he issues that, is that there is a way for you to exit each apartment, each dwelling... is that there is a way for you to exit each apartment, each dwelling unit. And if you can't, or if you can't, if the, the exit is too narrow or, or confined or otherwise unusable in case of a fire, then that shouldn't be used as a dwelling unit. Shouldn't be given a certificate to allow that unit.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell.
I make a motion that we assign this an ordinance number and-
Say again?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five, one. Stand by. Sorry.
The ordinance number will be two, one, nine, eight. An ordinance dealing with multifamily dwellings in Eureka Springs. Whereas the city, the Eureka Springs City Council from time to time finds it necessary to make changes in order to ensure consistent application and enforcement of the codes of the city and whereas the city has responsibility to ensure the safety of all residents and whereas the city defines the operation of multifamily dwellings as a business. And whereas the current city, the current code of the city does not address the licensing and requirements for multifamily dwellings in the city of Eureka Springs and whereas the number of multifamily dwellings currently exist in the city, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, every applicant for a multifamily dwelling license must provide proof of the existence for each dwelling unit of a multifamily dwelling or, and/or complex of an approved certificate of occupancy issued by the city following an examination by the city, by the Eureka Springs building official and by a certified officer of the Eureka Springs Fire Department. Section two, the owners or owners' authorized representative must provide the city with a list of the number of available off-street parking spaces for each multifamily dwelling and/or complex. For each unit with no separate bedroom, one parking space per unit. For each unit with one separate bedroom, one and a half parking spaces per unit. For each unit with two or more separate bedrooms, two parking spaces per unit. Section three-